I'm going to call this meeting to order. The first item on our agenda always is citizens' concerns. It's an opportunity for citizens to raise concisely, briefly, issues that they have, they want to raise, not for a dialogue with the board, but just to raise them so that we're aware of them. Yes?
Tara Frederick, West Acton. I'm here to talk about a couple of issues that I think we're going to come work up a proposal for the board on each of these issues at the Green Acton Land Use Subcommittee. And one of them is mosquito spraying of GMO-based bacteria spores being sprayed about the town. Although the board health has heard our concerns and is limiting the number of streets instead of just wholesale spraying all over the place, nonetheless, I think we're going to want to have like a public hearing on the issue and maybe even have a policy, propose a policy where we only have naturally occurring bacteria. Okay. The second one is tree clearing process because along the state numbered highways, there was a process that we used for a number of years and it's somehow gotten changed. So that's something else we're going to talk about. And then probably the most important thing is H-242O, which this, the mass wholesale rezoning law that the Smart Growth Alliance is bringing forth with paid lobbyists at the State House to pass. The Mass Municipal Association, a couple of months ago, put out a big comprehensive letter, I have copies here if you want it, against this. And I think that we, as a town, should do an investigation of this because if this is something that impacts us negatively, and it could be very, very negatively, I've heard the term 40B on crack. So we could write a letter to our legislator and to the legislature in general because I've noticed that at least one of our legislators, progressive legislators, are on board with this. So that also is going to get reviewed by, hopefully by, the Land Use Subcommittee of Green Acton and come forth with perhaps a proposal, maybe for the DRB or the Planning Board or somebody to review it officially. MIPC, Joan was there at that meeting, and the lobbyist was allowed basically all of the talking. And I think at some point, we need to have a presentation of the people that are concerned about and think that this is not a good thing. So, thank you.
Thanks, Tara. Anybody else? Citizens' concerns. Okay. I will do, excuse me, my chairman's update first. The 9/11 anniversary ceremony was this morning at the Public Safety Facility. It's always very moving with prayers and the ringing of the bell, the bagpiper playing Amazing Grace. The fire and police officers stood in formation throughout the ceremony, and Officer John Stackhouse shared some very interesting biographies about the two Acton residents who died on 9/11, Phil Rosenzweig and Amy Sweeney. The town manager, assistant town manager, numerous department directors were present along with numerous residents. Next item, there was a special joint meeting of the selectmen and the Acton representatives on the school committee last Thursday, September 7th, to interview three candidates for the opening on the school committee. By a nearly unanimous vote, the group selected former school committee member Dennis Bruce to fill that spot. I think he's going to be a very good addition to the committee at a very kind of difficult time. The Town Municipal Employees Team Building Day was last Friday, September 8th, and a number of selectmen were there and had a very good time. There was a very lively kickball game in the afternoon, and I haven't played kickball since I was in third grade and managed not to embarrass myself, actually made one run. My team lost, however. Hazardous Waste Day is Saturday, this Saturday, 9:00 to 11:30, 14 Forest Road. There's more detail on the town website about what is acceptable and also what isn't. So you really, if you're interested in participating that, in that, you should check the website to make sure you're carrying only what the folks at Forest Road are going to accept. Senior Center moved, as of September 5th, to 30 Sudbury Road, and the Recreation Department, I understand, has moved into the former Senior Center building. And finally, electrical, well, not finally, electrical aggregation, the whole program, there's public information session, one remaining on Tuesday, tomorrow, the 12th, at 1:00, at the new Senior Center. And if you want more information, go to masspowerchoice.com/acton. There were two previous public sessions on the 31st and also on the 7th, which was when we were meeting with the school committee. Finally, I have a sort of a scold about our conservation lands. I got word that somebody had installed a bench without permission from the Land Stewardship Committee or the town on the Great Hill parcel, and it's a very, it seems to be a very nice bench, but Land Stewardship Committee does have a policy to make sure that the installation is orderly and that the benches sort of meet their standards. I think that that, aside from that, there was the fact that whoever installed the bench and they put in concrete footings dumped the extra concrete behind some bushes. So, on top of disregarding the Land Stewardship Committee and the town's authority, they also were messy. And I also heard that on another conservation area, the Natural Resources Department had put up signs to direct people who wanted to hike the trails on where to go, and somebody removed the signs. And also, they filled in the holes, the post holes, which had been opened or cleared out with a lot of labor. They filled them in, and who knows where the signs are. So the Natural Resources person, Bettina Abe, said, "We don't want to make a big fuss about the bench and all that, but I think that if any of you knows who did either of these things, or is the person who did either of these things, please identify yourself to somebody. We won't punish you, but, I mean, you should know for future reference that the public land is open to the public, but it doesn't mean that every individual in town has the right to do whatever he or she wants to, willy-nilly. That would be chaos." And that is it, Mr. Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You succeeded in making about four fifths of my report already, but I will note at least you didn't get injured. We had our first ever injury at the, at the kickball. A certain land use director tried to take on Luke Penny. Just, just not going to work. Just not going to happen. Only other thing I would mention is not only did the Senior Center move up to 30 Sudbury, but all the other human service agencies, nursing, the social worker, and, and the veteran service officer. Also, on the 5th of September, we launched our Advanced Life Support, our paramedic service with the fire department. So we are now fully operational as a paramedic department. And a lot of thanks goes to both Chief Hart and also our, our Advanced Life Support Coordinator, Pat McIntyre, who's done a lot of work, working through the state, and even the feds were involved to, to get licensed in order to move forward with the paramedic service. So that's my report.
All right. Our first public hearing doesn't start until 7:10, but perhaps, Chief, I don't know if you, you're first up, so I don't know if you want to get set up and settled. I could, it's not a hearing, so we could just start right now, right? Excuse me? Yeah, well, I could, what I could do is do the consent agenda, and then we'll be at 7:10, so anybody who wants to come here for this particular appointment won't miss anything. So let's do the consent agenda. Item seven, accept gifts. Cemetery Commission Board to accept a tree donation valued at $195 from Sandy Taylor in memory of her parents. Item eight, accept gifts. Council on Aging Board to accept gifts totaling $1,530 to be used for building furnishings for the new Senior Center. Item nine, accept gift. Recreation Department Board to accept a gift totaling $100 from AAA Northeast for funding a new recreational facility and playground at Jones Field. Item 10, accept gift. Recreation Department Board to accept a gift totaling $200 from John and Karen Sauner to be used for funding a new recreational facility and playground at Jones Field. Item 11, accept gift. Recreation Department Board to accept a gift totaling $100 from Acton Coffee House to be used for funding a new recreational facility and playground at Jones Field. Item 12, accept gift. Planning Department Board to accept a gift totaling $20,000 from Aho Development Corporation to the Sidewalk Fund in lieu of sidewalk construction on Post Office Square. Item 13, committee appointment. Bob Roberts-Sukular, Transportation Advisory Committee. Item 14, multi, multiple one-day alcoholic beverage licenses, Theater 3. Item 15, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Sisterhood of Congregation Beth Elohim, October 15, 2017. Item 16, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Ironwork Farm, October 7, 2017. Item 17, request for waiver of one-day alcoholic beverage license fee, Ironwork Farm. Item 18, reimbursement request. Engineering Department Board to approve a reimbursement request for $200 for a prepaid parking fee at Jones Field. And item 19, request to dispose of obsolete items, Acton Memorial Library.
Motion to approve consent agenda items 7 through 19.
Katie moves. Who said, and Ching Sung seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. So now you're up, Chief. Katie, you've been coordinating this, and perhaps you'd like to sort of...
Sure. Do a little intro. Yeah, so as everybody remembers, a number of months ago, we started talking about our immigration policies and relationships in, in town in light of a number of issues, I think primarily happening at the federal level. And out of that, a group of citizens whom you will hear from, some of whom you'll hear from shortly, worked with and started meeting with the Acton Police Department because we didn't have sort of an official written policy regarding the police department's interactions with Homeland Security and ICE. And out of that is, came the immigration policy that was in our packet and is before you tonight. And so we just asked the chief to come in and give a little bit of an update on that policy and sort of what, what it is as it's a new town policy or, or police policy, and to see if the board had any questions.
Good evening. I'm here tonight. Deputy Chief Jim Cogan is here as well. We, up until recently, we haven't had a formal immigration policy. We had a longstanding practice of what we dealt with, with immigration issues. So what we did was we got together and came up with a formal policy. It turned out to be seven pages. And after meeting with some of the groups in town that were very active on the subject, they proposed a two-page policy. So we said seven-page, two-page. Two-page is probably easier, as long as it, it covers everything that we're looking to do. So instead of reading the whole policy, what I was looking to do was just give you an overview of some of the things we're doing. And this policy basically puts pen to paper and describes what it is we have been doing. We researched it. We don't have, in our records management system, we have a computerized record management system since the late 80s, early 90s. If you want to know how many tickets we had last year, we can run a quick report and we can get that number fairly quickly. We don't have a checkbox for interactions with ICE. If we search the narrative for ICE, we get a whole bunch of other things in addition to immigration's, custom enforcement. We tried I period, C period, E period, depending on what you're doing, but we don't have that delineated as an actual incident quickly. So what we looked through, fairly laborious to look through some of the logs and then some of the arrests we had, to see any interactions we did have with ICE. We identified three or four interactions over the past five years. Normally, they were operating without a license. ICE would let us know there was a detainer. We would say, "Okay, this is where the person's going to be." One person we bailed, a couple people we brought to court at the next court session. So we did not detain anybody on an ICE detainer. After doing this policy, the second one we did roughly in February, and shortly after, actually, yes, in June was the second policy. Shortly after that, the Supreme Judicial Court ruled that law enforcement in Massachusetts do not have a legal authority to hold for ICE detainers, so it worked out pretty well. But our policy basically recognizes the diversity of the community. We're committed to promoting safety and proactive community policing too, all, and are encouraged to seek, obtain police assistance and protection regardless of their immigration or documentation status. We rely on the cooperation of all persons to achieve our important goal of protecting life and property. Assistance from various immigrant populations is especially important when they are the victim of or witness to crimes. It's essential they do not feel uncomfortable or intimidated coming forward with information to insist, to assist our investigation. All persons are afforded all protections under the Constitution, laws of the United States, laws of the Commonwealth, Town of Acton. We do not inquire about a person's immigration status as a normal course of business. We will not use personnel or facilities for federal immigration custody or detainment. Immigration detainers will not be honored, but we will keep a record of all persons arrested who have been identified as having an ICE detainer. And we will, we will enforce all judicial warrant arrests. So that's the overview of the policy.
So my comments, that was my intro, not my comments. I just want to sincerely thank Chief Burrows and Deputy Chief Cogan and the entire police department. As the chief noted, this has been, while not a written policy, how they have been acting in practice for a number of years. And you run an incredible police department, and we're very lucky in this town. And you are really focused on community policing and on making sure everybody in our community is welcome. And it was great to hear how well you worked with other folks when they brought ideas, you know, and a shorter policy and a more concise and policy. And I think that this is a good reflection of our values as a community and of the work that you already do. And so I just wanted to say thank you for that, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. And as I said, I mean, you're already doing this, and it was just nice to have it sort of codified and in writing, and now to share it. It's on our website and things, but to make sure, we wanted to make sure that the public knows what the town's policy is so that people do feel comfortable coming forward if anything happens regardless of their documentation or other status of any kind. So just, my main point is a sincere thanks to our police department for all of your work.
Okay. And I would like to thank, yes, the police department, you chief and deputy chief, and also Katie for working with the residents, and thank the residents too for sort of working together on this issue. As everybody remembers from discussions we had earlier in the year, things got rather heated, people got rather emotional. I think that there was a lot of confusion about some of the terminology that was being thrown around. I mean, I think that I'm, I happen to be very comfortable with this policy, and I was one of the people who, you know, to the surprise of some people, was not real keen on sanctuary status because it was ambiguous to me. It left a lot of stuff that was undefined, it was unclear, and I didn't think it was sort of, it was concrete enough for my taste. And so, and anytime there's vagueness, I sort of think that that's going to, people will take advantage of that. So, but thank you very much for this. I think that this will be a very useful guideline for us in, to the extent that we're going to now move on to talking about potentially a, a town-wide policy, or a statement, or a guideline, or whatever it is, or something that just the board of selectmen stands behind. So, but thank you very much. I don't know if board members have comments and questions first.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions for the chief about the details of how this works, and this is not necessarily just immigrants, but any arrests that you make. I'm looking at paragraph eight in this A, B, C, D, E. Under C, it said, "Once a person is arrested, information you'll give out is whether a decision was made not to proceed with prosecution, the person was released." So who makes a decision not to proceed with prosecution? Is that the DA or is that the local police department? In a normal case, are you just, is...
Okay. You do, you do file charges in misdemeanors generally, misdemeanor cases, the local police? Misdemeanors and felony cases.
Okay. So you can also decide if you arrest somebody on a misdemeanor that you might not want to proceed with the prosecution for whatever reasons that might come up, I guess, huh? Is that the way it works?
There's, there's different reasons in different cases for not going forward with the charges. Sometimes the victim does not want to cooperate, victim does not show, so it's dismissed for lack of prosecution. There's several different reasons.
Okay. And so you release the person, and if you get an ICE detainer, you just let ICE know that we let the person go and they're no longer under our custody?
We follow our normal procedure, whether that's bail or being brought to court, and we just advise them of what we did with the person.
Okay. And then the other question was the next one that had to do with bail, and I'm just not familiar with the day-to-day operation of police department, but there are bail commissioners. So if you arrest somebody after hours or on a weekend, if you arrest somebody at 8:00 at night, you don't hold them overnight to take them to court the next day, you bring in a bail commissioner, and the bail, bail commissioner releases them, sets of the bail, and as soon as they pay it, they release them? Is that what happens?
If we can't get the body down to Concord District Court by 2:00, they take lunch from 1:00 to 2:00. If they're not, not there at 2:00 to be processed, it would end up extending the court day. So if we don't have them down there by 2:00, after, typically the bail commissioners are clerk magistrates. After they get done their normal day of duty, they'll call, we'll call them, and then they'll come out and set bail.
Okay.
Normally, it's a $40 processing fee for them to be bailed out and agree to come back the next day on their own personal recognizance.
Okay.
If it's, if the person's a danger to the community, then we will ask for an amount of bail, and the bail commissioner will set what that amount of bail will be.
Okay. Thanks very much. The only other comment I would have is, as soon, well, since the SJC issued its decision that there is no law in Massachusetts that allows police to essentially arrest a person, hold them against their will for an ICE administrative warrant, Governor Baker has filed a bill that would make it an arrestable offense to hold the person for an ICE administrative warrant. So that may change if that bill were to pass. I'm assuming, I haven't talked to Jamie Eldridge and her other representatives, but I'm assuming that given that Jamie Eldridge is, has filed the Safe Communities Act, that he opposes that. I have no idea where it is in the legislature, but that bill has been filed to essentially overturn the Supreme Judicial Court's ruling, and that would possibly make a difference in our, in our policy. But, and, and as the policy notes, if somebody is arrested who has prior serious criminal charges against them, ICE can always go to a federal judge and get an arrest, a warrant from a federal judge, and certainly our police department would honor that judicial arrest warrant as opposed to these administrative warrants that really have no legal authority, in my understanding, where ICE just simply types up a form that asks the local police department to hold this person against their will until they can show up and, and process them through the civil immigration process. So I just want to make those points, so thank you.
Anybody else? Ching Sung? Joan? Comments? Questions? Anything? All right, audience.
We kind of vision, we envisioned this happening a little differently. We had like a little presentation. Would you tolerate maybe a couple of speakers that are officially for our group and then invite...
All right, okay. So Tara, just to be clear, I think we're going to talk about the police policy first and then talk about the townwide policy, and that's the point where it might make sense to have the presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, are there, are there any questions or comments about the police department policy?
Well, yes. I wanted to thank the BOS for hearing our concerns and inviting us to propose this. I want to thank Katie for stepping up. We reviewed a variety of town and city policies, including non-binding resolutions, executive policies, bylaws, either by town meeting or by other means, and I think we reviewed probably like 30 different towns, and we had no written policy, and we asked the police to come up with a policy. They prepared one based on Cambridge. And before that, we were generally agreed on the need for a policy and the general terms of having a policy. So when we listened to what Rich was already doing, I don't think anybody was opposed to what they were doing. We just wanted a written policy. And then when we saw the, the policy written on Cambridge, this is the seven-page one, we thought it could be improved, and we worked with Acton Police Department for a couple of months. And I wanted to just make clear that we, we had 30 people at our first meeting, and there are over 50 people participating in this in various forms. So that, Rich met with us and heard our concerns and acted upon our concerns is really greatly appreciated. It's simpler, it protects the town in a variety of different ways. He read basically what the policy says, and during the next part, the proposal, explained why some of this is important, to protect the town from constitutional challenges. Then he took an extra step by running it, and maybe he does this normally, but we were really appreciative of it. He ran this by his union so that the rank and file support the, the actual policy. That's exciting to us. And so we want to thank everybody for that work, and Rich and Jim, thank you for taking the time to see us and do this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Any other audience comments about the police department policy?
Yes. My name is Don Wong. I'm a resident of Acton since 1999, and I have come here actually early in the years, and I support a sanctuary city at the time. I actually really want this to be more symbolic to all the immigrants in the town than actually getting into all the very complex details. I think having the police policy you just presented here, I think is very good compromise, very good way, and to provide a very clear guideline to all the citizens in the town, and also protect everybody in the town, and provide a very equal way, have a good due process when this issue should happen to the town. So I appreciate everybody putting the time and effort to make this happen. I only have one question. Do we need to vote this in the town meetings to make this official in the town?
No. This policy was sent up to the town manager, and once the town manager approves it, it's a policy for the department.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment about town meeting, because Katie, maybe you'd like to speak on this, that there is an extra step that we can to protect our employees and protect the town, is the strongest authority we have is a town meeting vote. So if we want to move forward with something like that, I'm certainly in favor of it, but that might be something that we do just because people want to. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that will be part of the kind of next, the townwide policy discussion, yeah. But the police policy is set by the police department, approved by the town manager. So this is now the police department's official policy as of July 1st, or, no, June 27th. And again, we just wanted to make it public, but it has been, it's all, again, it's been in practice for a long time, thanks to the great work of our police department, but it's officially been in, in place since June 27th.
Yes?
Yes, yeah. My name is Anping Liu at Monument Place. So thanks for, you know, different groups working together to get this thing done so that police have an official policy. So, you know, I'm reading the, you know, the policies, you know, number five, number six. So basically, for the number five, for the last sentence, basically it said, "Addressed T shall also be aware, be made aware that the Acton Police Department will not hold them in custody on the ICE, you know, detainer if they post a bail or are released on their own recognize." So what means on their own recognize?
That is a person who the bail commissioner doesn't believe, doesn't have any reason to believe they wouldn't come to court the next court date on their own.
Okay, I see.
So the bail commissioner will come out, he'll charge a $40 fee, and then expect that person, he'll, the person will have to sign a form stating that they're agreeing to be in court at the next court date.
Okay, yeah. Okay, then, for then, policy number six, it said, you know, "No person shall be held in custody by the department solely on the existence of the ICE detainer, you know, or other administrative warrant." The, you know, the apartment shall adhere to, you know, policies and procedures pertaining to the arrest of the persons. So based on these two questions, you know, I have a few, you know, simple questions. So basically, the first one is, you know, is the police department following the, you know, the MA higher, the high court, you know, recently decision, you know, solely, not solely on, you know, on the ICE detainer order.
So what, if ICE wants somebody, up until, well, they, they still can, but we just can't enforce it, they can issue what's called a, a civil detainer.
Yes.
And that's an ICE agent sitting at a desk writing up a form, and that's the detainer. There's no judicial review.
Okay, no judicial review.
If the person's committed a crime, an immigration crime, they can go to a court and get a judicial warrant that's actually signed by somebody in the judiciary.
So basically, once we receive a judicial warrant, we can keep them?
Once they issue a judicial warrant, it goes into our system and it pops up, and those are warrants we have to enforce.
You do have enough time, you know, for the ICE to respond?
The last couple of detainers that we had, by the time ICE called us, one of them, I think two of them, the person was already either bailed or already on their way to court by the time they got back to us.
Okay, so another question is, what kind of crime will prevent, you know, the police department to release the arrested persons?
That's just, section eight is if we deal with somebody who had a detainer, we're just going to list what happened to them basically, for our records to show, to keep, keep a record of what happened to that person.
So basically, kind of like a misdemeanor or kind of like a felony charge?
Whatever it is, we're just going to jot down, this person had a detainer last Thursday, this is what happened to that person, but we're not going to hold them on the detainer.
Okay. So is there any cooperation with ICE except, you know, the fingerprints? So basically, you know, on the policy for, number four, it said, basically, can provide fingerprints, you know, to the ICE fingerprints, you know, to the ICE department. So do we have any other cooperation with ICE, you know?
Four?
Yeah.
Pertains to, if ICE decided they wanted to start keeping records?
Yes.
For whatever purposes they're doing for immigration, we're not necessarily going to cooperate with their type of record keep. We keep our own records for our own purposes, we're not going to keep different records for other agencies.
Okay. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Any other comments from the public about the police department policy? Yes?
Hi, my name is Rabbi Mike Rothbaum, I'm the rabbi with Congregation Beth Elohim here in Acton. It's an honor to speak in front of you today, and thank you for taking comments from citizens. We have a number of congregants here. Jewish people know what it's like to live in societies in which it's decided that certain people, based on who they are, what their ethnicity is, are treated differently, and the Jewish people bear the scars of that, physically and spiritually. So we're really grateful that there are municipalities like this one who are taking it on themselves to stand up against broader forces in our culture who would pursue these policies. Not only have we seen the negative, and not only have we experienced it as a people, but we've seen what happens when righteous people stand up and say that they're not going to cooperate. We have, in our history, it goes back to the Pharaoh, who decided that the Hebrews were a special people who needed to be treated according to a separate set of rules. And there were two heroes named Shifra and Puah, who were the midwives in Egypt, who said that they would not cooperate with Pharaoh's death machine. And when Pharaoh said that the Hebrew boy baby should be killed, they told him a lie, said that the women gave birth before that they, before they could get there. First recorded civil disobedience, I believe, in our history. I encourage this body to do whatever it can to stand up against the Pharaohs of our day and follow the lead of our law enforcement professionals, and say, everyone in our town counts equally. Everyone in our town is part of our beloved community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rabbi. And, and I wanted to just thank you also for your comments during this morning's 9/11 service. I really enjoyed them, and I'm sure everybody else did too, so, and, and welcome to town. I know you're, you have big shoes to fill, so.
Madam Chairman, I just want to clarify something that I thought I heard, and I want to make sure I heard it right. So even if there's a judicial detainer, the Acton Police Department won't go and enforce immigration law? It's just to hold them? Is that correct, once you already have them? They won't, they won't send you a bunch of judicial warrants, then you have to spend your time going and chasing down people?
That's correct. When we arrest somebody, we go through the fingerprint process. If a warrant comes up from another state, from another federal agency, that, that will come up in that system, and those are the warrants we will enforce. We're not going to go out and, and enforce warrants, they're not going to call us up and give us a list of people to go grab, correct?
Because that one term says, no town resources will be used to enforce immigrants. Thank you very much.
That is correct.
Any other comments about the police department policy? No? Okay. Yes?
My name's Ling Ya Zhou, I'm from Six Whinging Farming. I just want to say, I really appreciate the police department coming up with this written policy. As a first-generation immigrant from China, I think this is very important to me, and thank you. And also, I want to thank Katie for your take initiative and help with all this. And I also hope our town, BOS, could make this town policy, do whatever we have to do, so make it a written policy for our town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Peter, did you have a question?
I just had one other quick question. It's my understanding that the Attorney General has now narrowed the focus of, of grants that would be affected to local communities that adopt, I don't know whether this policy would fall within that federal mandate or not, but to just grants that go to police departments, as opposed to general grants to the town for other services. Have you gotten any information from the federal government, the Attorney General's office, or do you have any understanding at this point about how this policy might affect federal grants that you receive for certain equipment or whatever?
I've seen a couple of different documents talking about certain grants not being allowed. The biggest federal grant we get right now is for the bulletproof vests. We get half back from the federal government, we get half back from the state government, but I don't know if they're going to look at each individual policy and make a decision as to which ones, you know, violate their policy or which ones are okay.
Audience comments about the police department policy?
Yes.
Yes.
My name is Bill Romer, I'm a retired Episcopal priest of fifty-seven years, and we moved into Acton roughly ten years ago and live in Audubon Hill. I just want to simply say that I am very proud of the information that I'm getting from the police department and from this community. It is terribly important, and I would certainly support the rabbi's comments, and I think that it is very important that we represent the values of this country in a way in which it isn't always being represented today on the national level. I've worked in intergovernmental relations at the highest level of the state and federal government, as well as in the church, and I think there is no excuse for the kind of behavior and thoughts that are going on today in politics. And I want to, again, thank this community and the people in it, and the police department particularly, who are very much affected. And I hope that as I look around Acton, we represent a good cross-section of the people of this world, and we live in one world. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for audience comments about the police department policy. This is not the end of the discussion, we will be moving on to some presentations about the proposal for a larger townwide policy, but police department policy?
Yes, I'd just like to ask if there's a way to publicize the fact that the police department are continuing their existing policy, or continuing their existing guidelines, so that everybody knows the rules under which the police are operating in town. So essentially, publicizing the policy standard, the standard procedure that you have been operating under, but that it's official, and, you know, to get the word out to people who aren't in this room.
That's sort of why we wanted to do this tonight, was to get the word out. Our meetings are on, recorded and on TV, and I'm always surprised by the number of people down who watch them. And it is on our website, I believe, as well, so perhaps we can, you know, direct people there, or share the link in, in some other way. But that was sort of the thought behind this tonight, was it's in practice, and it's an official policy now, and we just want to spread the word about it, so we wanted to do that in a public forum. But if we do the townwide policy, I think we'll talk about that next, and what sort of public discussion might be involved in that, and that might include some ways to also publicize the existing police policy.
Do you see your names, sorry for the record? Anne Wagner, Horseshoe Drive. Thank you.
Hi, and this is Young, and living on Seventeen Hazelwood Street. I have a couple of questions after reading the proposed due process. The first question is for police officer. In the past ten years, how many immigrant detainer have been fired in police, Acton Police Department? And how many happened in the course of standard processing procedures?
We only went back five years, it was very labor-intensive, and over the five years, we've dealt with four people who had ICE detainers against them. We didn't hold them on those ICE detainers, we processed them like we would process anybody else, and notified ICE afterwards of they either got released or brought down to court.
Okay, so basically, you are doing what the, what the proposed procedures?
Just to be clear, it's not a proposed procedure, the police policy is a final police policy. There's a separate proposed townwide policy that we'll talk about next, but the police policy that you see in here is not proposed, it's the police's official policy.
So it's finally agreed by both police and the town?
So the way a police policy works is it just needs approval from the town manager, so it has approval from that, but as Tara noted, it's also been approved by the police union as well.
Okay, so this has already been approved, okay, thank you. So in the last sentence of number five, in that policy procedure, in that process, it says, the addressed T shall also be made aware that Acton Police Department will not hold them in custody on immigration and custom enforcement detainer if they post bail or are released on their own recognizance. So my question is, how is the amount of a bail is decided? And will the immigrant, immigration detainer impact the amount of the bail?
No.
Okay.
It does not affect the bail.
So who's going to decide the bail?
The bail commissioner.
Bail commissioner, okay. And last question, number six, it says, no person shall be held in custody by the department based on, based solely on the existing of the immigration and customer ICE detainer or any other administrative warrant. My question is, what does other administrative warrant mean?
Not sure, but we wanted to cover it in case there's anything else that's not a criminal judicial warrant.
Okay, so if it's not a criminal judicial warrant, and that's considered as other administratives? Okay. So how about any other federal detainer? So if, if the government issue like a detainer for a person, so were you going to ignore it?
Yes, and the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts told us in July, we haven't, we don't have the right to enforce those civil detainers.
Civil containers, okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I think, thank you, Chief, very much for, for, if you want to stay and hear the discussion about the potential broader policy, you're welcome to, but you may have better things to do. Anyhow, but thank you very much for not only being here tonight, but also working with the citizens on what I think is a very good policy, and as I said, something that the board will use to inform its own discussion of a broader-based policy. You did a lot of legwork, or they, everybody did a lot of legwork, so it helps.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night. And so now we're ready for the, the next part. The residents who are going to do some sort of presentation, yeah. Brief, they, I've been assured it will be brief, and there are a number of you who want to be involved, so divide the brief time into little segments.
A third of it is done, because my part's already been done.
Good evening, I'm Chris Webster from Longridge Road, fifteen Longridge Road. Thank you very much for hearing us tonight. Some of what I'm going to say now is a little bit deja vu all over again, because...
Sorry, Paul, can we pause you for one second? We have a...
Somebody, yes, I'm getting, I'm getting prompted to read, oh, gosh, where's, do you have the notice? I just got the wrong, it says, it says eight fifteen. Oh, this is not the right one.
They have to read hearings by law.
Sorry, we have a hearing notice that I'm supposed to read, yeah. Okay. What is, this is the, I didn't, you know, this is a problem, I just, I always have, I have the stack. My apologies, we, we, when we have hearings, which we do, this, we have to read the notice at the time that the hearing is set in our agenda, and the trouble is, is that, oh, here we are, we have a seven forty-five hearing, but we don't have the notice. The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on September eleven, twenty seventeen, at seven forty-five PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room, two oh four at the Town Hall, four seventy-two Main Street, Acton, on the application of Meadowbrook Condo Association for a Site Plan Special Permit, eight slash two slash seventeen dash four, four sixty, four sixty-eight, forty-six, anyhow. Under zoning by law, section ten point four, at four twenty-four, four twenty-eight, Great Road, Acton, the applicant proposes to expand the existing parking area, the application and accompanying plans can be inspected at the Planning Department and Town Hall during normal business hours. Now, back to you gentlemen, and, and women.
Thank you. So as I said, I'm Chris Webster from Longridge Road. This may be a little bit of a recap over what we just had in, in connection to the police policy, but we thought the running order tonight might have been different, and so, but very briefly, we're going to have three introduction, three introductions to this part. I'm going to speak, first of all, about why we, why we came to be here. Second, we're going to talk about the process by which we proceeded working with the police, and this is now going to be generalized towards the, all of the operations of the town. And thirdly, we'll talk about the actual wording of a potential policy. So, as I'm sure people will recall, with the presidential campaign last fall, and with the subsequent election of our president, there was a lot of concern, a lot of focus by him on the fact that there were different racial communities amongst us, and this led to, led us to be concerned as a matter of urgency to put in place some protections against the potential actions like that. So we've heard about the police policy, and this, our reasons for doing this were, first of all, compliance with the law, and I'm not going to go into the fine details of it, but it's, but clearly, that there are judicial protections already in place in terms of the status of, of immigrants, even though they may be undocumented, and more recently, of course, within Massachusetts, we've had the LUN decision, which is very relevant here. Secondly, the, the fact that this makes for strong and inclusive communities, where everybody can be an equal participant, and pursuant to what I said earlier, we've seen since we started working on this, events such as the riot in Charlottesville, and even more recently, the action by the administration on DACA. And we, of course, have DACA members amongst us, for example, in our high school, people who would be covered by that, that ruling. And thirdly, the fact that it's become transparently clear that the reasons of the, for the administration really had nothing to do with protecting communities, and was simply driven by racial bias, and, and, and that's something which we feel we should, we should stand against. So that's very, I know it's a bit of a recap, but that's very briefly... So that's very, I know it's a bit of a recap, but that's very briefly why we're here. And so now I'll pass it over to Tara to speak about the next segment. Thank you.
Well, I can certainly repeat all I was going to say about the police cooperating and helping develop a policy together. I don't think I need to do that. But I will say that what we're about to propose, I think, shields the town and supervisors from what employees might do on their own. It prevents changes by police and other departments to do, go do something else. And I don't know if I'm stealing Paul's thunder, but in summary, the proposal is that federal law prohibits town officials from imposing limits on exchanging data, particularly about immigration status. But the Brookline, very clever in figuring out that you can state that, and that's fine, but it says, "Notwithstanding the foregoing paragraph, no government official or department of the town of Acton shall be authorized by this statement to collect any information regarding citizenship or immigration status." And so effectively, by not authorizing people to collect it, you have nothing to share. So you're not violating federal law, but you're placing limits on the collection of the data. So I don't know if I stole all that stuff. I'm so sorry. So I guess I, but this is Paul. And Paul really helped us organize and talk, speak with the police and figure out all of the different town bylaws. He must have looked at, what, 30 or 40 of them? Something extraordinary. He has stacks of them, and he's looking through them, and we made matrices and talked about the different things that we thought we wanted as a town. And then we talked about people who were opposing and finding out what, why they were opposing and figuring out where we sat in terms of consensus. So I don't know what else I could say.
So my name's Paul Garver. I live at 266 High Street. Been there about 10 years, which makes me a relative newcomer to Acton. Yeah, it's true that I've been very much interested in immigration. My wife is an immigrant. I've lived in 25 and worked in 25 different countries, in many of which I was an immigrant. So it's something that I think, I'm very sensitive to all the arguments about it. But I just want to focus in on what I think the town, what would best serve the town. Just as when we worked with Chief Burrows, we always had in consideration what's best for the town of Acton and what policy is consistent with her existing community policing policy. Well, I think we don't, what we need to do, and Tara did telegraph it. One thing is we have to deal with the question of legality, because there's some concern that a vindictive administration will try to retaliate against communities that do the right thing. And so far as we've been able to ascertain, and together with the ACLU, there's only one federal statute that actually is a, actually presents a barrier or a potential hindrance to a town or a city or a state adopting a sane immigration policy. And Tara rattled it off, but I'll read it a little bit more carefully. There is, you know, one of you lawyers could help me how you actually cite it, but under federal law, I'll put, cite it. "Federal law prohibits town officials from imposing limits on maintaining, exchanging, sending, or receiving information regarding citizen and immigration status with any federal, state, or local government entity." This is, I think, from 1997, and it was in the Clinton administration. It was part of it, an overall immigration package. But as far as we know, this is the only applicable law. And we then say, "Nothing in the bylaws of the town of Acton or the policies and procedures of the Acton Police Department or other department of town government are intended to violate such sections." So we don't intend to violate the law. What follows upon that is actually what we think the town policy should be, which builds upon the very sound policy of the Acton Police Department. "Notwithstanding the foregoing paragraph, no government official or department of the town of Acton shall be authorized by this statement to collect any information regarding the citizen or immigration status, lawful or unlawful, of any individual, if such information is not required to be collected by the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the bylaws of the town of Acton, or the policies or regulations of the Acton Police Department." So as Tara said, you can't share information you don't have. We see no useful public purpose in ever asking anyone about their immigration status. It does not, it can only be discriminatory. It serves no purpose for the public order or the public safety. And this is, this is why we propose that the town of Acton adopt this policy, first to defend itself against potential attack, that its action would be, might be considered illegal by some tweeter, or, but also setting forth a very clear policy that it's not the business of the town of Acton to collect information on immigration status. This is totally modeled on the town of Brookline. They looked at this very extensively, came up with a police policy and a very, and then decided, and this is language proposed by the ACLU as well, that this is a kind of belt and suspenders thing. It is something you can hold forth, and this protects not only the public authorities of Acton, but also the individual employees. And I'll just say one thing about its applicability. I'm not quite sure whether school board employees or town employees are not, they're not clearly, but it seems to me this is a policy which should not affect, should be not only for town employees, but it should be the policy followed by the schools, because nothing could be more disruptive to education than to have the possibility of federal agents ransacking through the schools to arrest young people or detain young people who've been only doing the right thing. So I just think this is a, it's a sound policy. It's a fair, we're not asking for any special privileges for anybody. Everybody should be treated alike. And if you don't know what somebody's status is, you're going to treat everybody alike. So thank you, please.
Thank you. I just note that the school district is a separate entity, so if you're going to pitch this, you have to pitch again to somebody else. Yeah, no. I don't know if this language, because I wasn't involved in putting together, is this completely drawn from Brookline, including the word, reference to Brookline in the...
That was my mistake. That was my mistake. No, Danny warned me. I was like, no, 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 I fixed the typo, Danny. I did not fix it.
I have to say with no discourtesy or disrespect mental lawyers, because I was once at one, but I have to say, notwithstanding the foregoing, I can't stand that. It's very lawyerly, but I think that for a policy for townwide, if we're going to have one, and I'm open to the idea, I would like to have language that's a little bit, you know, not passive voice. This is a big bugaboo of mine and very clearly written and with, you know, you can have the citation, but, you know, the USC reference, but, you know, just make it a little bit more straightforward. I think the police department policy was much more along the lines of something that every person can understand without having to be a lawyer, not being put off by it. So, but thank you very much for all of your work. I don't know if you've been in town 10 years. Have you, have you ever been a selectman? Because you just, I mean, reviewing 30, 30 different town bylaws on this issue, that sounds like something that, you know, you've set you up for doing some hard work on this board, so, yeah. Sure, thank you.
So just a couple comments and kind of setting this up for the rest of the discussion tonight. So first of all, thank you to this group for doing all of this work and the research and looking through other policies to come up with this. It's a very, if you look at what other towns have done or passed, they're a lot more complicated than this, and this is very straightforward and I think gets at what we want. And again, just to echo the points of what this group here has said, the reason we want to do this is, one, to support the police's policy that they've already adopted and to extend it to all of the other town officials. And as a note, you know, it says in there that officials can't collect this information unless they're required to. So there are times that Laura, as our social services worker, if she's helping somebody apply for, you know, state programs or things like that, where you're required to indicate your immigration status, she might have to help with that. And that would not be a violation of this policy. It's just in any instance where you essentially do not need that information for lawful purposes, you would not collect it. And so the other question might be, well, we already do this, so why do we need to have the policy? Well, in part, it's, you know, the same thing. The police department were already acting in a community policing capacity, and they already were following all of the steps sort of laid out in their official policy, but there was no written policy. And so that could have changed at any time, or other officers might have acted in a way not consistent with the policy. So the point was to write it down and to make sure that everybody in the public knew what the policy was and that all of the police officers knew what the policy was and that it's codified in our official policies. And so that's the same thing when we talk about wanting to extend this to all of the town staff, is that, A, it's supporting the Acton Police Department's policy and it's saying, "All of our town staff already do this." Our town staff, I think you'll find if I go to get a dog license, that the clerk's office isn't saying, "Well, are you a citizen?" They just don't need to know that. And so most of them are, I think, none of them are asking that now. But we want to make sure that that's officially what our policy is and so that there aren't any, you know, individuals who would decide to do that, which could open us up to legal problems. So it's just codifying what we already do and making it public and clear that we are not in the business of discriminating against people based on their immigration status or any other status. And again, it doesn't afford people special privileges. It treats everybody the same. And so that's why we want to do this tonight. And so we have not run this as, we noted this, as you saw from the table in there, this is essentially word for word Brookline's town policy. And that's because we also largely use Brookline's police policy, so they relate and support one another there as well. So it has been run, I'm sure, by Brookline's council. We haven't run it by Acton's town council because we wanted to bring it to the board first and talk about sort of the process that the board wanted to take. And so that's the question tonight, is, does the board want to pursue adopting this proposed policy? And if so, do we want to work towards a process that has the board adopt it as a board or bring it to town meeting? And if we choose one of those and are interested in moving forward in one of those capacities, do we want to, what are the next steps? Is it bringing it to town council? Do you want to have any sort of public hearing or just have another discussion of it at one of our meetings? If we're doing it as a board adopted policy or, you know, if we're going to town meeting, what's the process for doing that? So that's sort of my main questions tonight are, is the board as a whole interested in moving forward towards adopting some policy like this? And how do we want to do it, either as a board policy or a town meeting vote? A town meeting vote, it might have to be structured differently, and so we'd have to talk to town council about what that, what that would look like. And again, as a note, this is Brookline's board's policy there. Board of Selectmen adopted this. So those are the main questions before us. And I would say I'm obviously supportive of moving towards this, adopting this policy. And I could go either way. I mean, I think there's some benefits to bringing it to a town meeting, but I think that would have to be putting it into our charter in some way, so I think it would be structured differently. And I think in the short term, it makes sense to have the Board of Selectmen adopt this policy. And I think the next step would be sending it to our town council to take a look at. And maybe you could talk to them, Janet, about making it a little clearer or simpler.
Well, I'll speak as, I don't know, either the chairman or just another board member with you sort of serving as chair, but I'm inclined to have this board agree on some sort of policy with input from council. And council, I would trust council to clean up the writing, so would deal with that issue. And then I would say, because that will be faster, we'll have a policy. And then we can talk about, you know, having some sort of discussion at town meeting, whether it's adopting something that goes into the charter or it's some sort of, you know, resolution or something, just to get a feel for what people, other people in town who don't come to our meetings typically are thinking and whether they're comfortable with it. But obviously, if we decide to support a policy, it would be nice to have, be on record as having the full town supporting it as well. I mean, being, having a selectman policy is better than not having one, but I think it's much better when you can get a lot more support from the town as a whole, so. But anyhow, I don't know if you want to call on people or should I call on people? Okay. Anybody, Ching San?
So given how close we are to the fall town meeting, or in this case, I guess, winter, right? I think that it'd be reasonable just to do this for the, especially given sort of the length of what we're looking to adopt or what we're looking to put forward. I think it's reasonable to try to do that in the wintertime. I would like council to look at it so we have final language before, you know, we move forward at all. I don't, I think that it's important to make sure that, you know, we have that input. With respect to the content of the policy, I don't really have substantial issues with the content of this policy as written. I would prefer to see it expand to the idea that government officials and departments don't collect any information that is not required to be collected. So it's not just specific to citizenship and immigration, although that is the particular concern raised here. But I believe that the policy should just be, if you don't need to know it, don't ask. Right? And so I would prefer that the policy be written that way and maybe specifically mentioning citizenship and immigration as a piece of information that is of most particular prevalent concern, you know, in general, but the policy is for generally just unnecessary information collection. That is how I would prefer to see that constructed, just from a content perspective. That's a minor tweak based on, you know, what the policy is.
I mean, that would be something, obviously, that we could run by council, see if there's an issue with having a broader base approach that says, "We're not going to collect," affirmatively that we're not going to collect information, that we don't have any authority under any law to collect, so. Peter?
Personally, I generally support the policy. I think it's consistent with paragraph two of the police department's policy. I understand it's intended to go to the broader town employees and departments. Katie mentioned the social worker who might help people, you know, applying for public housing or SNAP benefits or whatever, who might be disqualified if they're not legal residents. But there is one circumstance where we ask this question on every form, on every applicant, and that is volunteers for town boards. When I was on the Board of Selectmen in my first term, I think it was 2007 to 10, we decided that we would allow only legal residents to become members of town boards. So we have a question on our volunteer application. It's kind of the reverse of the situation. It says, "Are you a citizen?" And if they say no, "Are you a legal resident of the United States?" So we may want to rethink that if we go with this policy. I mean, I think this is a good time to look at that. I learned more recently that the town of Boxborough doesn't ask that question, and they're not concerned with the immigration status of residents of the community who want to apply for town boards, so. But that is one circumstance where we ask the question kind of from the reverse side, but it's on the form, so.
I remember that discussion about, you know, only allowing legal residents to be on boards, and it was a big step. And I recall that there was some controversy about it, some people were, but I think it's, a lot of it has to do with discomfort, not understanding what the immigration laws are and what it means, you know. It just, and yeah, I think that, I was thinking the same. I think that, I was thinking the same thing, that that question is a problem, the whole, we have a policy, a BOs policy, which nobody knows about, that says, we allow legal residents, sort of legal resident aliens, to be members of boards. And, you know, we have a policy, and nobody ever looks at it, you know. But obviously, the question is still in the application form. So, yeah, we need to revisit it, and then think about, well, why did that question get asked to begin with? And did it matter? You know, I don't see that it does, because I know plenty of people who live in this country, have been in this country for decades, including people, elders in my own family, who never became citizens, and were very responsible and contributed to the society, but, you know, they just didn't want to relinquish the connection to the old country. So, anyhow, what else do we need? Would you have something? Joan, do you have something you want?
I'd just like to add that I would support such a policy with some rewrite.
Can you indicate what kind of rewrite? I mean, can you? Can you explain what your concerns are, what kind of rewrite? Because we need to, if we're going to move forward with this sort of now.
Yeah, no, I think the issues that have been raised are sufficient. And congratulations to all who worked on bringing this to us.
I do have one comment, two comments. I'd like to include LGBT, disability, race, country origin, income status, any of that stuff. I'd also like to make mention of no databases. So, it's one thing to have it on a piece of paper, in a file cabinet someplace, as opposed to a database that's much easier to get. So, if we're going to rewrite Brookline's language, we might as well make it as good as we can. So, thank you. And actually, the Brookline people, after watching what we've been doing, they asked us to let them know if we have any improvements to their language. So, thank you. And thanks for hearing us. I felt like we were received very well. We were provided steps to get support. We were asked if there was anybody on the board that volunteered to be our liaison, and to help push this forward. And I was very pleased with the process. Thank you. Does anyone have last words?
Time for audience comment. Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay. What about audience members? Questions, comments about the proposed townwide policy?
Hi, Miriam Wezak, High Street in Acton. I would just like to thank you for doing this work. I would like to thank the board for pursuing, you know, keeping this town safe for everybody, regardless of immigration status, at these incredibly difficult times. So, thank you, thank you. Yeah, thank you to the police for pursuing the policy, these policies also, even though they're not here anymore. Thanks.
Thanks, Miriam. And Danny?
Danny Factor, 11 Davis Road. I just want to say how impressed I am with this town and the collaborative effort between the citizens groups, the police department, the Board of Selectmen. And I also just want to say that, you know, many of us here at this meeting are citizens, and, you know, feel good about what it looks like, you know, we're doing. But I can't help but think of the many undocumented people who live in this town, who are literally going to sleep easier, knowing that they're not going to be treated in a dispassionate way. And what you're doing tonight is really alleviating fear, and it's a very, very good thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Danny. Yes?
Wei Li, 15 Hazelhurst Street. So, I think this policy is, proposed policy is very, very good. I agree with it. I also think it's a very good idea that Mr. Chan just said, expand this to other areas that can identify certain citizens. In particular, I'd like to add citizenship, immigration status, and the country origin to the list in particular, because sometimes, country of origin and a certain kind of a condition can be correlated by, I guess, by some people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristin Smith Park, 8 Wingate Lane, also a member of the activist alliance, which supports all of what everyone was doing here. I just feel like, wanted to say that if the police department supports this, I think it's a no-brainer for the rest of the town to support it. And I also wanted to just say, sort of side note, the humility that you all would just think about and say, "Oh, you know, we've done this for so many years. We have it on our application process for the selectmen," that you could even question that and go, "Oh, well, maybe we can change that." I feel like that's humility, and I really appreciate that, something that's been done for a long time, that you're willing to look at that and say, "Oh, maybe we don't need to do that." Have that on the application, I think is very impressive. So, I want to echo what people have been saying, that it's, I think Danny Factor said this, it's impressive. I love being a part of this town. I love that the rabbi and the Episcopal and Palestinian leader came and said such passionate things. It's exciting to be part of a town that does that. So, I'm echoing what everyone said. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny?
My apologies to speak again, but I just wanted to respond to the new comment about adding some protected categories. If you take a look at the police policy, there is actually in one section, a long list of protected categories, and that could be used as a basis, which includes natural, national origin, sex, gender. I think disability could also be added as well. But I think that would be a good template, and be another way of using the police policy to apply to the whole town. So, I think many, many people will support that. Thank you.
Thanks, Danny. I have to read another hearing notice. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 in the Acton Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on September 11, 2017, at 8:15 PM, on the application of Pramuk Mahant Kupa Corporation, doing business as Acton Wine &amp; Spirit, for an all-alcohol license transfer and pledge of license from liquor outlet, doing business as Acton Wine &amp; Spirit, located at 305 Main Street, Acton. The application is on file in the Selectmen's office and may be viewed during normal working hours. Now, back to any audience comments, or, we're going to finish this discussion, and then if, and then move on to the hearing. Are there any other audience comments about the proposed policy on immigration, or?
I just want to make one last comment as we close, that we have been talking about renaming our group. It's the Let's Make Act in a Sanctuary Town, and we've heard ideas like Welcoming Town, and things like that. So, if you have input, please let us know. Come to a meeting, we're going to be talking about next steps with Katie. There's also a bill at the State House talking about tracking Asians, and so, we're probably going to be discussing that at some point, because there's some issues relative to equal access under the law, and then how do you have equal access if you don't track? So, that's going to be a very interesting discussion later on this year, I think. Anybody else while we're here? Last things? And sign up with us if you want to get on our announcement list. Thank you.
So, do you want to talk about next steps?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, Katie's got more. Katie's got more.
No, 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 I don't have, just next steps. So, I think, thank you, everybody, for bringing this tonight, and for your support. And it sounds like the board is generally supportive of moving forward. I think the next step is to bring it to council for their input, and then we can talk with them as well about expanding it, and what that would look like, and what their thoughts are. So, I think I'll work with maybe Steve on setting something up with town council, and then we'll bring a revised version back to this board, hopefully for a vote.
Yeah, that sounds great. And emphasize that at least two of us really wanted it to be rewritten.
Yes, yeah. So, send me thoughts.
Yeah, we really did. Yeah, okay, great. Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much for coming and expressing your interest in this. All right, we are now back to our 745 hearing, which, for which I read the notice about the Meadowbrook Condo Association. Is somebody here? Oh, here we are. He's got the easel, and you're all set to go. All right. And Ching Sung, this is your project, so I don't know if you want to take the lead. Usually, the assigned selectmen sort of leads the discussion. You're most knowledgeable, and you can introduce the person, and talk about what the project involves, to the extent that you understand it. And then, let the, I assume you're the engineer? Yeah, that's usual, so let the engineer explain the technical details, but.
Yeah, so, I mean, overall, overall, I think that the site plan special permit's pretty self-explanatory. Meadowbrook condos is looking to expand their parking area, and so, I just alter it over to the engineer, and allow him to sort of go over the particulars.
Just push the button, yeah.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dan Carr from St. Mary's McNairy. I'm here presenting the site plan special permit for the Meadowbrook Condo Association at 424 to 428 Great Road. To give you an overview of the site, there are three buildings, served by approximately 47 parking spaces, and there are a total of 53 units. There's wetlands on the back of the site, and there's also a river that projects a riverfront area. We have been by the Acton Conservation Commission, and they have approved this project. The proposal is to increase the amount of parking spaces on the property. We are now proposing 70 total parking spaces, which is 70, 70 total after completion. Correct, so 27 additional spots. There's 47 now. Sorry. And we're also proposing to better the drainage on the site. There's a bio-retention area off the back of the parking lot, that about 60% of the pavement is going to flow into, and decrease the rate of runoff and the volume of water entering the wetlands off the back of the site. We're also proposing to add a dumpster pad with, and there's also a hydrant in the area of the proposed pavement, so we're proposing to relocate the hydrant, and add a little line of a water main to that hydrant. And so, basically, we're making the site less non-conforming. It is still non-conforming, because there are, I believe, 106 parking spaces required, two for each unit, and we're increasing it from 47 to 70. So, we're making the site a little bit better. Currently, there is not even one parking spot per unit, so hopefully, this will make the condo association happier. Any questions?
So, I guess my only comments are, I guess, just to echo sort of the general comments in the packet. You know, planning had a few comments, but overall, you know, those are, as planning has said in their memo, is fairly easy to address, you know. And I think that our usual conditions of, you know, taking care of town staff, or whatever, taking care of comments made by town staff, is sufficient for that. Overall, like the, like Dan said, the site is already non-conforming. This makes it less non-conforming, and I don't really see much. I mean, I guess if you guys have questions, feel free to ask them, but I don't have any particular questions or concerns with this project.
Are there any questions, comments? Katie?
Sure, just real quick, Dan. What do the current residents do? Where do they park if there's not enough parking per?
That's a good question. I'm not entirely sure. I believe, is the owner in the audience? No?
I don't know the association.
Oh.
Yeah, after he's a bike.
Could you speak at the mic?
Just as we're on TV.
Yeah, the mic is on up there at the podium, so that'd be great.
They just park wherever they can. They block fire lanes, they park on the lawn, they park just about anywhere they can fit. There's just nowhere near, because there's not even one spot per unit there.
Right, yeah, not good. Okay, and then my only other question is just making sure that the applicant is comfortable with, in particular, adding the biking, parking, and the sidewalk fund contribution, I think. Or, actually, it wasn't a sidewalk fund contribution, it was building the sidewalk.
Yes, we would like to build the sidewalk without curbing, if that's possible, pending Mass DOT approval.
So, I guess that would, Kristin, is that something the planning department's comfortable with?
So, we talked to the applicant about this prior to meeting, and basically, Mass DOT has certain requirements that require granite curbing. Granite curbing costs quite a lot of money, and we felt that the amount of work being done on the site and being proposed really should be proportional to what is being asked for the sidewalk. But seeing as they're adding pavement, they're already going to be out there, just a sidewalk sounds reasonable. I think if Mass DOT says, "No, we'd rather not have one at all," if we don't get granite curbing, I think that would be, I wouldn't expect that comment to come back, but if it were, the board could have kind of a backup. Kind of if, you know, if Mass DOT says no, you could consider something else. One thing we thought of was, we have a requirement for new streets, like sidewalks, to be constructed along new streets, and the amount is lower than $50. It's $20 per foot, which would be about like $6,700, about that, for this particular property. So, you could condition something along the lines of, if Mass DOT says no, then this could be a backup.
Having that contribution to the sidewalk fund?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just something to consider.
Yeah. Okay. Otherwise, I thought it was good, and as you noted, it's making it less non-conforming, and dealing with the improving the bio-retention issue. So, while you're adding impervious service, you're improving it overall. So, it looked good to me.
Peter?
I'm just wondering if they could look at a meandering sidewalk, which would be off of the, off of the street somewhat, have a grass strip buffer in between the street and the sidewalk, which might eliminate the need for granite curbing. I don't know how much, how much space you have up there.
Yeah, the actual leach, what's that? So, unfortunately, the leach field is actually in the front yard of the property, so that the grating goes right up to the boundary of the frontage. So, it would have to be off the property.
Is that it, Peter? You have any? Okay. Well, I had a question. If the leaching field weren't in the front, this is all academic, I mean, would you be able to have a meandering sidewalk and avoid doing granite curbing? Or if you're doing anything in the front, does the state require that you put in granite curbing? So, if you had a grass strip, and then the sidewalk, I assume that you're improving the front, maybe the state would still require that you, is it going to?
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure how that would process.
Anyhow, I mean, I think that what our assistant town planner has offered is a solution, alternative, if you, the applicant, are open to that alternative, a contribution at the rate of a new development, $20 a linear foot, instead of the other rate, if that's...
Yeah, I'd like to defer to...
Concept on that side of the street, there's about a six-mile stretch from Littleton to Concord, and all, and it's a continuous sidewalk on the other side of the street. If you go down, there's probably less than 200 yards of sidewalk that have been put in on the side of the street, the Meadowbrook condominium. To me, it's more of an unsafe thing, where you have 30 yards of sidewalk that someone may walk on, and then, there's nothing. I don't understand why they're even looking for a sidewalk. You know, if they wanted to do some kind of fun, where everyone's going to chip in, and they're going to do the sidewalk, the whole five miles, or five to six miles, I can understand that. But for safety, if you go up there and look at it, you walk on the sidewalk from that entrance to this entrance, and then you're out on the highway, where if you're on the other side of the street, like I said, it's a continuous sidewalk from Concord to Littleton. I just don't, I just don't understand it.
It's a requirement in our bylaw. We, you know, when we have some work done, we typically require that there, you install a sidewalk along the frontage, if there isn't one. I agree that in this case, where there's a continuous sidewalk on the other side of the street, maybe it's, doesn't make as much sense, although I imagine that it would be nice on Route 20, on a major road, great road, to have sidewalks on both sides. nice on Route 20, on a major road, great road, to have sidewalks on both sides at some point. I don't know how long that would take, but it's open, I mean, we can talk about it. I don't know if we, if in every instance, Kristin, you know that if there's continuous sidewalk on the other side, we were still required, we require constructing a sidewalk on the, you know, or do we then sort of say a donation in lieu of constructing a sidewalk? I know we had this in connection with, what was it, an insulate? We had, there's a sidewalk on the other side of the street, and so, and then we had to negotiate the contribution.
It's usually this sidewalk committee that makes that recommendation. I don't see that in this record. I'm looking at their agenda for this upcoming meeting next Wednesday, and they don't have it on there either. It didn't go before them, apparently.
No, but, and it's also, I mean, the way that those sidewalks get built, too, in part, is in these chunks, right? Because that's how that five-mile strip got built along the other side of 2A, or how a lot of sidewalks in our town get built, is that they get built in smaller chunks that end up connecting, because as somebody does work or a new development comes in, they're required to build sidewalk along their frontage. And as Janet mentioned, the other way we do it is if you, we decide, or the applicant feels that they don't want a sidewalk, and we feel that there's no public purpose in having that sidewalk on that frontage, then we ask for a contribution to the sidewalk fund, and that goes into a townwide sidewalk fund. And as Peter noted, we have a sidewalk committee, and they rank all of the streets in town and use that money in the fund to then build sidewalks in other areas of town that need it more. Honestly, that's probably going to cost you more than if you are able to just build a sidewalk in your frontage. So as an owner, you probably want to go that route, A, and B, as Janet noted, on a street that large and popular and with that many condominiums and residential units and shopping, I think it's desire, I would see a public purpose in gradually building up sidewalk along that side of the road as well. And I think that was what the comment in the planning department's memo was, that they felt that there was a public purpose to having a sidewalk there, and that eventually they see there being connections to other portions of sidewalk along that side of 2A. So I hear what you're saying, but it's sidewalks are one of those things that it might feel like you have these small sidewalks to nowhere for many years, and you do, but eventually, you know, 10 years down the road, you look and there's a sidewalk connecting the whole street now. And that's what I think we're hoping to get to with this side of 2A.
Okay, I just, besides the safety factor, the cost for the association, the cost for the size of the project that we're proposing to do is just, we just wanted to repave and add a few parking spots, and to add that burden on, say, okay, sure, we'll let you do your parking lot, but it's going to cost each owner an extra $300. It's, you know, we're asking the people for money to do this parking lot and to, just to add that on, and then they're going to look and say, well, they're going to look at it and say, a sidewalk to nowhere, or it's costing us, you know, 25% of this project is going to be toward the...
Yeah, I think that, well, the other issue you have to deal with right now is you're dealing with the state, and they're requiring for granite curbing, and if that, that is going to be a lot more expensive than any sidewalk we could require. So, I mean, the alternative, if we have the alternative in there for contribution, I mean, that's much, that's less expensive than, because we normally charge prevailing wage, so we've had a number of developers who complained that, oh, I could build a sidewalk for cheaper, and we say, well, you know, sometimes we say, well, then do it, or, you know, but, so if you can have the option of building, you can do that, but the alternative proposal that Kristin gave is for a rate that's, you know, a little bit less than the usual, so...
That's, we'd like some, it'd be nice to have some options, get the thing approved so we can move forward and get pricing on our parking lot, and then have some options on what we have to do for the sidewalk would be great.
Did you have something to say, Ching Sung?
No, nothing in particular. I mean, I was going to just say that I guess we should, I would be in favor of including the various options for the sidewalk, and that's fine.
Okay. Joan?
Will any of these parking spaces be assigned to the units?
No, it's always been open parking there, but there'll finally be at least a parking spot that is, I don't know if you call it legal, but the spot, it will, again, it will be, they're not assigned, it's open parking, and if we add 20, how many were we adding?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. It will, it will take care of a lot of the problems we have there. We'd have more problems if we assigned spots, I think.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Okay, audience, any questions, comments from the audience?
Hi. I used to live, Tara Fodrick's West Avenue, I used to live at Meadowbrook, and I could tell you it was always trouble parking. And also, it's really affordable there, and so a lot of folks who are first coming to town and can't afford, often live two, three people in a bedroom, and so I am totally in favor of this. And I also feel like the sidewalk's important, even though it's on the other side, this side, that side, both sides, that people are going 50 miles an hour down that road. There's no crosswalks. You've got to walk like half a mile to get to a crosswalk. So I am in favor of the parking lot, but I also am in favor of the sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Okay. Board, are we ready, are we ready to close? Okay, motion to close the hearing?
I move to close the hearing for the Site Plan Special Permit 0802217-468.
Second.
Okay, Katie moves, and Ching Sung seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining. All right, now, discussion of what we want the decision to be. And I assume it's just, the principal thing is the condition about the sidewalk, and any other requirements that the departments commented on in their comments, but, which wasn't that much.
No, that really wasn't a lot, and so I think that if we just include those...
But it's the bike, the bike parking, and then dealing with the sidewalk issue.
I think the two different options for the sidewalk is find the lower rate for if the state comes back and says, you know, no, we have to have our granite curbing.
Granite curbing, which costs more than the entire paving price.
You know, or, or, you know, we can just have them build the sidewalk, you know, without the granite curbing. I think that's fine as is.
So I'd make a motion to approve the Site Plan Special Permit with an inclusion of the departmental comments that we received, and in addition, that if Mass DOT denies the waiver for granite curbing, that the applicant make a contribution to the sidewalk fund at a rate of $20 per linear square foot.
Second.
Okay, Katie moves, and...
Friendly amendment.
Linear foot.
I don't think it's linear square foot. It's linear foot.
Linear foot. There's linear in there.
Linear or square, but yeah. So Katie moves, and Ching Sung second, and with the friendly amendment by Peter. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you can, I guess you can confer with Kristin about when the decision will be ready. We have to, I have to sign it when it's done, so, and it shouldn't take long, so. Okay, thank you. All right, now to our 8:15 hearing, Acton Wine and Spirit. And you have a choice. You can stand at the podium, you can sit here, we have two mics if you want to sit. Seems to be quite a number of you, so...
Standing is fine. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Board, and thank you for fitting us in on what was obviously a busy night for you. Before the board is a...
This was actually a really quiet night for us, so...
It's not 10:30 or 11:00.
Then I stand corrected. So before the board is a transfer and pledge of a liquor license. This all relates to the sale of Acton Wine and Spirits, 305 Main Street. The applicant here is Pramook Mahat Krupa Corporation. Two of the owners, two of the three owners of that corporation are here with me today, Jay Patel and Santu Kamari Patel. Ms. Patel is also going to be the manager of the location as well. Jay has almost 20 years of experience in the industry. Santu has nearly 15 years of experience, and over that period of time, there's been no violations, so they certainly bring with themselves experience and the understanding of responsibility and the, you know, the type of store that they're operating. So the transaction's been very smooth, all of our financing is in place, the lease has already been agreed upon. It's been a tremendously smooth transaction with the seller. The seller will be staying on for a period of time to help through the transition period. We actually had the opportunity to meet with some of the employees today, and hopefully we'll be able to retain all of them. Certainly, the store has very knowledgeable people with, you know, the wine selection, the craft beer selection, so to be able to keep those people on and keep the store operating in the same manner is certainly our hope, which we believe we'll be able to obtain. So beyond that, there are no major changes to the store, no structural changes. So with that, I can certainly answer any questions that you may have, as well as Jay or Santu.
Board, questions, comments? Motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license transfer request.
Somebody going to second?
Second.
Okay, Katie moves, and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining. Thank you.
Welcome to town. So thank you.
Thank you for waiting. This is actually a very good night for us, so. All right. And now, Mr. Manager, we're into selectmen's business. The first item, we don't need to really discuss, although you could explain, maybe you could explain what happened.
Right. There is no need to consider this request from the Discovery Museum for a waiver of the privilege fee. Initially, when the engineering department formulated the privilege fee for the Discovery Museum, they had asked the health department, what Title V requirement should they be utilizing? Title, the, the health department suggested they use the flow rate of the secondary school, which includes not only cafeteria, but shower rooms, et cetera. Considering this institution services kids four to six years old, there's no cafeteria, I mean, their main focus, the age group is four to six, there's no cafeteria, there's obviously no shower rooms. I met with Cheryl Ball today. We agreed that we would treat them as a, like a, like an elementary school under Title V, and therefore, just the difference in the rate per flow, which is five gallons per person per day, was enough to eliminate the privilege fee. So we don't need this on the agenda.
And I would add that Neil Gordon, in talking about the much more limited use of water and generation of wastewater, noted that in that age group, you had quite a number of people who did what you're supposed to do when you're hiking in the White Mountains. You carry in and you carry out. A number of kids are still in diapers, so...
Don't always carry out, Chris.
So that's great, so we, so we don't have, we don't have to exercise our great powers to grant any kind of waiver or anything like that, but anyhow, yes.
Tara Fodrick's West Second. I freaked out because I was like, showers? Restaurant? Oh my God, the Discovery Museum's so big already. So I'm just here to comment that I think that the Discovery Museum is quite big. We love them, but maybe they can expand in a, if they're going to keep expanding, to expand in a more sensitive way and keep the old buildings, and anyway, thank you.
Thank you. So we will move on to the next item. Ever Source Rate Hike Municipal Opposition Letter Discussion. There was some stuff in our packet, but this came in, I think, between meetings, and I know there was some sort of deadline for comment, which has passed, and the question is whether we should generate some sort of comment anyway, or would it be pointless? I know that we had people from the Green Advisory Board weighing in on it and saying that, I guess, that this could have an impact on the benefits we would get from the aggregation program, although I don't understand the details, but, Mr. Manager, maybe you have some guidance?
Well, actually, I read it, some of the issue actually is more like with the net metering credit on solar, which impacts us with the solar installation at the landfill, so that would be a major factor for us if the net metering credits were lowered.
So is your recommendation that we make some sort of, submit some sort of letter?
Well, I mean, I know the deadline was the 31st, but, you know, I think we certainly could send a letter and try to explain that, you know, this whole issue came to us between meetings.
Okay. Katie?
I was going to say, even, you know, I know the deadlines passed, but maybe we just authorize the town manager to send a letter to this effect if the deadline's extended or if there's another hearing period or opportunity for the town to express our concerns with the proposed rate hike. And then that gives you the ability, Steve, to respond on our behalf if the issue, you know, if we're able to provide comment in any way in between, you know, any of our future meetings, because it was disappointing to see, and I was reading, I was like, this is great, and then I saw we had to respond by August 31st, and it's a little bit past that, so...
Yeah, unless we called a special meeting, it wasn't going to happen, so, no, that sounds like a good idea. Does somebody want to move to...
Yeah, the only thing I would add is I would suggest that we CC it to our senator and to Rep. S.
Right, right, okay. Okay, so Joan has moved, and somebody want a second?
Second.
Okay, and Tara, you have a comment?
Well, I was just going to hope that you sent it anyways. I used to work for a regulator, and often stuff would come in months later, and we'd still consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so anyhow, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion to authorize the town manager to submit a letter? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hello, gentlemen, down at the end? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, thank you. And then finally, we have the town manager's contract, which we discussed in executive session, and essentially, we authorized, the changes we authorized were two and a half percent increase, and then an increase in the deferred compensation from $9,628 to $10,590.80, and an unused sick leave buyout at a ratio of one to three, which would result in a total payment one time of $30,357. Move to approve the town manager's contract for 2017, 2018. 2017, 2018.
Second.
So Katie moves, and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining. And I think that takes care of everything.
Move to adjourn.
Ching Sung moved to adjourn, and who's second?
Katie.
Katie seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining. Thank you. I don't know why I said abstaining. Well, that wasn't bad, which is before nine o'clock.